Welcome to the May tenth, twenty twenty one, Parma City School District Board of Education Meeting. Whoever would please stand to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. We'll call Mr. Musa.
Mrs. Bratz.
Present.
Mrs. Carpus.
Present.
Mr. Price.
Present.
Mr. Switzer.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Thank you very much. The Board remains committed to the health, safety, and welfare of its students and their parents, our staff, and our community, but even in these times, the Board needs to take actions to keep the district operational now and fully functional in the future. For these reasons, the Board will conduct an in-person meeting tonight with limited seating due to the Board's decision to continue to maintain three-foot social distancing. We will livestream this meeting to the public in accordance with applicable law. Dr. Smilek, can you please confirm that this meeting is being currently livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
And can you please monitor the livestreaming throughout the meeting, and if there is a problem, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulty may be addressed?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. With that, and this is a happy announcement on my part as we go, beginning with the next regular meeting, which is on June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, of the Board of Education, we will have additional seats available and not require masks for fully vaccinated individuals. We will continue to livestream the meetings on Facebook Live as we hope to reach as many people as possible, but we're trying to get back to as normal as possible, so we will have additional seating and we'll be welcoming people back, and we will stay with all safety standards that are in vogue as we continue, but it is with relief, I think, in my mind, that I'm able to make this announcement rather than the one that I've been making for well over a year now. So, thank you. At this point, information to the Board. Dr. Smilek?
Yes, Mr. Switzer, I appreciate the opportunity. We actually presented, approximately a year ago, on the same topic. If you remember, we had a very high-achieving student pass away from a very violent death in the summer of two thousand twenty, two thousand nineteen, actually, and the student was transgender, and when we reflected upon the experiences that that student had had, he'd had many very positive experiences, and the family spoke of that, but there were negative experiences as well that he shared with me in a hearing and then subsequently in some further conversations, and it led us to say that we can do better. We can do better in terms of meeting an increasingly diverse student body, student group population, meeting their needs, and better understanding their perspectives and their experiences, because when we reflected back, there were definitely areas that showed our weaknesses as that student had progressed through our schools. So, we formed what became known as an Embrace All Committee in the summer of two thousand nineteen, and we began to work certainly along with our district goals, increasing student achievement, improving transparency, and practicing fiscal responsibility. We really thought, you know, two pieces here, improving student achievement was obviously always a goal, and part of that is making sure that people are comfortable in our classrooms, are comfortable walking in our hallways, are comfortable with the overall approach that they feel at school. In terms of transparency, I think it's important that every year we update you on our progress, and so that's really the purpose of this evening's meeting. We continue to meet this year guided by the mission statement that you actually adopted this last year. You accepted this in a resolution, Board voted five, five nothing to accept this. We honor the uniqueness of each individual, embrace diverse backgrounds, values, and points of view to build a strong inclusive community and to prepare students for lives in a multicultural society. We thought that that was really very symbolic of the work that we needed to really embark upon. If you look, we actually designed a logo that was actually Kim Weber's class, Viscom class. Students put a series together, and we chose them as an Embrace All Committee, and that's displayed throughout our district. It's actually displayed in all of our classrooms, in all entrances to school buildings as well, just as, again, a symbol of how important we really believe this Embrace All work is. We have a pretty wide-ranging committee. Now, I will say that, you know, when you look up at these names, for the most part, they're administrators, but we also have Mr. Carpus, and we're grateful for her contributions throughout our two years, Vivian Walker as a counselor, Cybo, and so she's participated and been a great contributor as well, and all others are board members, or not board members, but members of the central office staff, or building principals, building administrators, but very wide distribution throughout elementary mill and high school, and this is the group that meets on a monthly basis. So, part of what we wanted to update you on tonight were the steps that we developed last year, and when we looked at really putting together a series of action plans, we did some research. We looked at industries to see who was really, you know, on the cutting edge of building these types of embracing environments, and we looked at higher education, we looked at our peers, our collegial districts throughout northeast Ohio to see what best practices we could glean. And first, first action step was displaying the mission statement on classrooms. We completed that, completed that very early. We also partnered with the Northeast Ohio Diversity Center. All of our teachers this year participated in approximately two-and-a-half-hour workshop, building relationships and creating inclusive educational environments, again, right in line with the mission statement that we developed. That was rated very highly, actually. Some hiccups with the first time they presented in November with the elementary group, but we met with Northeast Ohio Diversity Center. They were very receptive to our feedback. We tried, and really Tiffany Moll is his best in all the professional development that she's put together. We always try to be as engaging and really interactive as possible. Northeast Ohio Diversity Center had a little bit of sit-and-get in that first piece, but looking at the comments as the middle school teachers and the high school teachers went through the same sessions, they really were responsive to our comments about wanting to be more interactive and really engaging. We committed to surveying physical environments once per semester to ensure private and gender-neutral facilities. That doesn't mean all of our facilities, but that means we have privates and we have gender-neutral facilities. That was one of the most kind of aha moments that we experienced last year when we had a student focus group with Valley Forge, and they actually talked about how some of the locker rooms or bathrooms didn't even have bathroom floors on stalls. And so, you know, if you had a student that was experiencing any need for privacy, that they couldn't get it, and that was an embarrassment, and it was something that I was really glad we heard from the students. So, we've completed that action step. Registration forms include a preferred name prompt. We've completed that. Embrace all extracurricular activities at all schools. We have completed that. In all honesty, it's a varying degrees of success. We, part of what we did this year with our Embrace All meetings was have those groups report out, and part of what we've taken from there is we've got to do a better job from the central committee that we operate with, putting together some dos and don'ts in terms of what we want to see from an extracurricular activity. Admittedly, too, with COVID and students in and out, it wasn't a great year to really get extracurricular off the ground. We wanted our website to contain an Embrace All page. I would call that in progress because it's there, but we just haven't had it, we haven't done enough with it. It is a link on our website. We have a microaggression form, actually, which we just really haven't done anything with, and so it's there, but we, that's definitely a summer, you know, punchless item. We didn't improve that. Collecting Embrace All data from schools through surveys, we did not do that this year. Part of the reason, again, we wanted students in our schools and in terms of what we would have gleaned this year, I think it wouldn't have been accurate data. So, that's the report from last year's action steps that we've really implemented throughout this year. And then the last slide I want to show is what we plan to do, and again, this has been a committee that's come together once a month and has really a good plan, a series of plans for next year. And then the last piece is actually how we plan to have a better plan, and we'll talk shortly about that. First one we want to do is design a menu of diverse cultural activities, and so that can be, you know, anything as simple as a potluck dinner or some type of movie that we might be showing that can really stretch, you know, folks' understanding and perspective a little bit more than it is now. And so that is an activity we will complete next year. We will also offer parent academy workshops on gender and sexual orientation issues. We know that those can be really dramatic moments and dramatic developments in a family's existence, and we want to make sure as a school district that we provide enough resources and tools for families experiencing what can be a very difficult transition. Build a speaker series of non-traditional role models. We think that this is important as well. Again, as we are increasing in diversity, we need to make sure that our students are able to see role models that look like them, that have had similar experiences to them, and so that's something that we look forward to building. We'll design a unit of study for our new eighth-grade class, which is our freshman experience class, entitled Learning and Living in an Increasingly Diverse Society, and this is, again, part of being transparent, we have to acknowledge the fact that right now, critical race theory has become quite a hot-button issue. This is not critical race theory. I want to be very clear. There is not some type of hidden agenda to adopt, some type of, you know, radical left-wing curriculum to, you know, make all of our students hate white people. That's not at all what we're going to do here. We're going to follow our mission statement about being inclusive and helping our students to feel embraced, and part of that is understanding as students what it's like to study and exist in an increasingly diverse society. So, we're building that curriculum this year, and we can give updates if the Board desires, and quite frankly, I think our community might desire, because I know it is a hot-button issue. We'll have administrative academies for Embrace All-themed texts. The book that I'm reading right now is The Sum of Us, and that's the book that I plan to lead an administrative academy on. Basically talks about public policy, how public policy can sometimes result in disproportional results despite, you know, sometimes the best intentions. We want to, again, partner with Northeast Ohio Diversity Center for professional development for our teachers. This will be aligned, actually titled Sexuality and Gender Acceptance. This is something that, as we collaborated with the Northeast Ohio Diversity Center, really became a need that teachers were asking for. Many comments about, we need more on this. When we look into our classrooms and we work with our students, this is the theme that most often emerges as something that we just, we don't have a whole lot of knowledge or experience in dealing with professionally, and we've got to make sure that we're providing those tools. And so that will be only at the secondary level. I do want to clarify that, but we were happy with the Northeast Ohio Diversity Center's work, again, happy with the way they respond to our comments, and look forward to, again, working with them for continued professional development. We'll also partner with Dr. Krista Baskey, who is a Kent State professor. She's actually a professor in the College of Education, but she's done a lot about, a lot of her work is centered around inclusivity and equity, and she's going to come and she's going to meet with people and ask very general questions. We're going to reach out to parents and students and staff members, actually, this summer, so that she can get her work started. It is, again, the only agenda she is truly a qualitative researcher, meaning she's coming with no preconceived notions of what she wants to find out. When we talked about how we continue to grow, all of those action steps are things we're proud of, and yet we have to continue to really delve deeper, and we went through a couple different experiences. We participated in courageous conversations. We thought maybe that was sort of a magic bullet. Northeast Ohio Diversity Center was another resource that we explored, and the reality was, they have what they're going to present, and that's great, but that's what they present to everybody. And so, Dr. Baskey's going to come here and be able to really say, here's what you've got in your school district, and she's looking to interview up to fifty people at each high school, then kind of tailor it down in terms of middle schools and elementary schools. Here's what you've got, and here's a recommended roadmap. She's not going to set any curriculum for us. She's not going to make any clear decisions for us, but she's going to use her professional expertise and her job, her wisdom and knowledge as a researcher to really give us some more ideas so that we can continue this work. We don't want to be about checking boxes. We don't want to be about, you know, just the potluck dinner. Those are great, but that's such a small step toward, you know, the real, really realizing our mission statement of embracing all of our students. So, I wanted to clarify this. I know it, you know, is a hot-button issue, as I said, with the critical race theory, controversies going on in different school districts. This is very, as transparent as we can be, this is our work. We've shown the people who have done it, and we've shown the results that we've had. With that, any questions from our Board, Mr. Thomas? Mrs. Bratz?
Um, Dr. Smilek, how often does the Embrace All Committee meet?
We meet once per month for the most part, but then there were other things like when we did the courageous conversations, that was sort of an ad hoc meeting. We did some meetings, sort of subcommittee meetings, to start to get some of the work in terms of what the action steps could look like. So, the entire committee meets once per month, but then again, there's other work between them sometimes.
If possible, I'd like to be included in that, come and...
Do.
...and observe...
Yeah.
...what's going on, and intensely interested in the subject, and knew that student a little bit, and I would like to come and, you know, listen to more of the details and...
Yeah, absolutely.
...see what's going on. So, thank you.
Happy to have you.
I'd just like to kind of share from, this started, obviously, with the conversations about this student, and we dove into every kind of aspect of different populations of students that are in our school district, and what led us down to this was like actual student and teacher and administrator, what they're seeing in real time in current school years and stuff like that. That's how we kind of narrowed that focus down, and it has been the, I still, it's been over a year now since we met with the first groups of students, and that was still one of the most just powerful things, getting these groups of kids to share that. And I think the administrators have done a great job of picking people to lead those groups at the school levels to kind of get kids to open up with them, and I do like what you said about, we need to kind of narrow the, because we had great presentations from different schools, but they were wildly different in terms of how far they were going. So, some better focus, and I think that's great to reflect on from us, that we need to do a little better job with that, but it's really something that is happening, and it's not just happening with one or two students. There's large populations of our student body that is experiencing a great number of, you know, issues where they need privacy, or they need guidance, or they're looking for someone, you know, safe to reach out to, and I think that this is wonderful, and I look forward to meeting you all.
Thank you. We look forward to it as well. I'm all on board.
Yeah, I'm glad that this has come to the forefront with and doing this group. I think it's fantastic. I love everything about it. Obviously, it's something that we needed to do a long time ago, just never trusted before, so it's good, very proud of all of you. Good work.
Well, thank you all. We'll turn it over now to Mrs. Stravka with her seventeenth curriculum adoption of the last four months.
Thank you, Dr. Smilek. Well, this one, I always say I'm really excited about, but this one I am, because if we back up to probably winter, beginning of spring, we talked about opening up core classrooms efforts that, and I shared with the Board that we wanted an art space, we wanted a sensory room, that we were going to commit to a STEM learning area, and that we were opening up a full-day self-keeping unit, all of which is so important for our earliest learners in Parma. In addition, the one thing I wanted to share is we cannot do any of that unless we have a curriculum that ties that interdisciplinary work together. We are setting up First Step very different next year in terms of how we organize, and I just want to preview that really quick. We are setting it up in pods, and I'm sharing this because I'm very passionate about this. For example, if I am a future Ridge Grove kindergarten student and I attend First Step, I'm going to be with my Ridge Grove peers that I am going to attend kindergarten with. Teachers are going to be connected as that future Ridge Grove teacher, where they are going to connect with that Ridge Grove kindergarten teacher. So, we have it set up where we have the Valley Forge pod, the Normandy pod, and the Parma Senior High pod, and so we are going to talk very much about that excitement of kindergarten and building those friendships, because the one thing that was missing when I was the principal at Pleasant Valley is our First Step kids, they have their friends, but they were all disconnected throughout the district. So, we want to tie in that curriculum. I want to get that five-star rating, and we want to give our kids experiences. So, with that, I'm going to move to our district goals. Increase student achievement, that's our number-one job, clear and coherent curriculum. That's what we have to provide our teachers and our students in this district. Our process is transparent, which Amy will discuss, and you will see our cost with this and the connection to ODE's behaviors. So, why do we need a new adoption? I always like to give the why. We are aligning to our district goals, so our department is working really hard at putting every level and content area on a rotation. Currently, when we dissected what the curriculum is being used by our teachers, it's a 2010 kit. We literally had one for all of our teachers. I'm not sure it was ever Board-adapted, and so when we look at our four-star rating, the reason why we're not giving five stars is we did not have equity. Our step up to quality is how our community defines our programming and that connection to ODE, early learning, and our activities. Our role is to provide quality and equitable curriculum materials, which we need to do with our earliest learners. Our teacher-based team collaboration will be that much richer with that interdisciplinary connection, sharing of materials, and, you know, being able to have our students rotate between the arts, science, technology, engineering, and math, having that green space, and really being creative in their learning at such a young age. The other thing that we found is when we were in remote distance learning and hybrid, it was really hard to educate our students because our students did not have that online platform. So, this curriculum adoption comes with the online platform for our staff, both certified and classified support staff, and then also our students and our parents, which there's a family engagement component. So, our review process is the same. We have to make sure it's on our ODE list. We request our samples. We have a rubric that we use for every single adoption. We have our technology review to make sure that everything is working. We invite our vendor for district and staff presentations. There's a period of time for staff and public review, and then here today is our final recommendation that has not changed with our many adoptions we've had. So, here's our First Step committee. We always like to start, this is a smaller adoption, with our building leadership team members, and you will see our building leadership team members listed above. They did an initial deep-dive review. They had discussions. They looked at top material recommendations and what area programs are also looking at as well. And then our entire staff completed the rubric, the checklist, the TBTs, and then engaged in the vendor presentation. So, Amy gets to share all the fun stuff. Now, turn it over to Amy.
All right. So, this was really fun because the teachers were so excited to have things that they could bring to their kids that connected so deeply to what they already felt was so important for early youth learning. You're going to find with this curriculum, it was the one that they were working with pieces and parts, but it has been improved beyond measure to engage students even more in what I would consider more real-life connections, as well as the ability to connect literature and then a family component. So, this is going to provide teachers and students and families with connections to certain things that early childhood development standards require, which mostly surrounds social interactions, investigations, and understanding basically how the world works, and starting to get that understanding to school in general. So, if you go to the next slide. So, the two big components that really I'm going to talk about is that this curriculum is not where you would see in a kindergarten classroom necessarily, where it's just based off a lot on academics. Instead, this is the whole child, and so when I say whole child, I'm talking about those hands-on investigations that are embedded in different themes and studies that have to do with things around them. So, for example, there are studies that these students will do on wheels, and so what happens is that they're immersed in activities surrounding the wheels, they're reading about wheels, they're doing sensory activities that have to do with that, as well as then engaging in social play that then is connected to their learning. Other types of studies like trees and balls, just learning how the world works, but connecting it and understanding every component of how a child needs to learn. So, one thing that this program provides is not only, obviously, hands-on materials for students and for teachers, but also intentional teaching that I think was a missing component. When you're sharing one kid from a long time ago, and you don't have digital access, and you don't have teacher guides for everyone, the systematic approach to what a child needs with this program kind of gets lost. And so instead, this is the guided edition where it's going to provide teachers with intentional teaching strategies, a routine that is embedded throughout, and that all pods then have the same type of vocabulary, the same type of learning, and they can share and experience different studios, and they collaborate on what their students are doing and then what the other students are doing. So, it's really about building that basic foundation of learning, but also those real-world connections. The other really neat thing about this new adoption is that family engagement. When I spoke to the PLT teachers, and Mrs. Stravka had talked about when they were remote, and how they were so struggling with how to connect with families who are learning, and also that these kids need hands-on. They also need to have ways to be able to adapt, to make this program for all of their students, because we have students in First Step that learn at different levels, that do different things. This program allows that to be able to be something that families can take some of the same types of developmental things and learn. So, there's things like learning guide for families. There's an entire digital library that we connected with an app that all of our students now will be able to have read aloud stories that they would not have had before, and that teachers were having to try to get stories to students in paper form, for sure this is going to literally mean to them. So, that family engagement, the hands-on learning, and that connection to the real world was one of the biggest things that really we're excited about. It was beautiful. So, when we, like I said, talked to the staff, they were very excited. A hundred percent of our staff who echoed the presentation said that they wanted to move forward with this, obviously understanding that once we adopt this, there's still a longing for that collaboration, the curriculum mapping, and making sure that we are aligning to hit all of our students' needs in First Step. That is something that Mrs. Vilek will be working with her staff on very beginning of the year. The community, we had a couple of responses, and they were just mainly talking about how they're excited for this, and that they are, you're so appreciative of what the First Step staff does, and they totally trust that if this is a resource they think that would fit, continuing to grow our students at First Step, they're all on board. One of the things that we've talked about many times with all of our adoptions is that ongoing support. We will be providing professional development for our teachers in First Step, and we also will be continuing to connect this curriculum with what they're doing in their school goals, as well as just developing their students and aligning to what they know their students need. So, that work is going to be ongoing with both curriculum instruction, but also just in-house, which is what I think will even bring them more together even more. So, as far as our adoption, it's going to be a five-year adoption at thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars. We're using permanent improvement funds and federal funds. It's going to get us those three kits, and when I say kits, it involves a lot, and so when it sounds like they're sharing again, it's a ton of materials, and it's all enclosed in, you know, a kit with these hands-on materials, with these texts. They get to have books. They're going to have a whole library of books for each of the themes. So, it's going to be a constant, basically, resource library that they're going to be able to use to be able to pull from, for both certified and classified staff. And then they all have digital access that will then connect with their parents as well, and we're really excited to be able to bring this, for sure. So, lastly, we follow our same routine of trying to improve student achievement, and in this case, when you say student achievement at the preschool level and First Step, we're not just talking, obviously, moving them and getting them ready for... we're not just talking, obviously, moving them and getting them ready for school readiness. We're talking about building that foundation of level learning, investigating the world, and just understanding how socially we can continue to help each other and grow. The transparency, we wanted the public and the community involved to review. We want our staff, we want this, and be a part of the process. And the fiscal responsibility is whether or not we buy kits for everybody or we share. The reality is that we're going to benefit and reach all of our students no matter what.
So any questions from the board?
Me. So I have a couple of questions. My first question is, do we have any intention to do a PVLA experience for preschool?
Not at least.
Okay. That was, I was hoping that was kind of the answer. So with the, so one of the things that I like about this, so my question is, is there, so with the mapping out, so I'm going to use my daughter for an example. So she was there, ended up being at First Step for three years in preschool. Is there, does this allow for a teacher then to, I see the naps, the head nodding, you know, because they're ongoing, so that expanded piece. And then from a parent's perspective, that family engagement, I love it. Because those kids come home and they're like, oh, I learned about trees. What do you mean you learned about trees? This lets you kind of dig in. And I am hopeful, based on a lot of things I've learned over the years, that this whole, the wheels you were saying, like, you're going to see them, use them, do these things, that's that same thing that they're going to be expected with the numbers. Like, it's not just a number two. These two dots represent two, these two water, so that kind of same investigative learning that is quite exciting. So I am, I love this. So, thank you.
I don't have questions, but I am thrilled to see the family engagement piece as being an integral part of this programming. I love the expansion for our little learners. I think this is fantastic. But I, I love giving families, helping them develop the skills. You know, parents of very young children are very engaged with their lives because it's required because of their age. They need more from parents. But adding the educational support piece where parents get an early exposure to helping their students learn, I think that will help as they move into elementary and beyond and understand how important it is to be engaged in that learning process with their children so that that can be a team effort. And what happens at school continues at home and becomes richer, more reinforced, and a stronger whole learning experience for kids. So I'm real excited to see that. And yay, this looks great.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, you wrapped it up.
She took a lot of my money.
If we can also just recognize, I mean, the work that Tiffany and Amy did to adopt nine different curriculum this year in a really short amount of time, too. I mean, it was really, they were first out. With limited access sometimes to, you know, being able to meet as a group. And there's a lot of moving pieces that you have to coordinate because, again, like almost anything else, we could sit here and say, let's buy this. But you're not going to have a teacher buy in. And if you don't have a teacher buy in, those things might end up on shelves and, you know, they're not actually in the hands of our children. So to be able to have all that process behind the actual adoption really boos us down the road. And then to have the professional development pieces, I mean, not only do we get the resources, but we're going to get a lot of work in how to use it. So I can't thank you enough for all of your work.
Stefan, thank you.
And I will tell you one more thing on that. Your teachers, too, under, from all different things, I often get to be the parent game pick, but they are so excited to dive in and, like, sit with the kids. So even some stuff that's for next year that they've already gotten a little bit of access to, they have, like, students giving them feedback about, how did you like this lesson? What could I do differently next year to help, like, engage the kids? And that is wonderful because the older kids then are feeling a little bit empowered about the younger kids coming out and helping them. And the fact that the teachers are so excited about it to do that process is really.
Yeah, and just including them in the process.
Oh, yeah.
The recommendation comes from our teachers. That's the most important part. And that's why we're always so excited about this because it really is a true collaboration. So thank you.
Thank you.
One more option. That concludes our remarks.
Okay, communications. Any board member, communications issue?
I do not have anything to say.
Okay, treasurer?
I do not have anything.
Adoption of amendments under walk-on items, amendments this evening?
No.
Isn't that, is the TIP an amendment?
That's an under unfinished business, I think.
No, unfinished business.
So that's just going to be a continuation?
Yeah.
We're going to send it back to, but it's not, so. Not until business.
But it would still exist, correct?
Yeah.
So it's not, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't changing the, sorry. Changing the resolution. Okay. Then I move to adopt, well, we don't have any, so I don't need to adopt that. Invitation to public participation, anybody?
No.
Approval of public record proceedings. Move to adopt Resolution 2021-06265. Approval of written record proceedings on May 27, 2014. Regular Board of Education meeting.
Second.
Motion to second for 2021-06265. Questions or comments?
Just that you need to reread that day. May 27, 2021, you said 2014. Next.
I read it off of here. I move to adopt Resolution 2021-06265. Approval of written record proceedings from the, yeah.
May 27, 2021.
It would be May 27th is right, right? 2021, regular Board of Education meeting.
I'll second that one.
Okay, we have a motion to second for 2021-06265. Sorry about that. I should have caught it when I was reading it. Questions or comments? Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
2021-06265 has been approved. Unfinished business, Mr. Kreis.
Yes, I would like to move to refer Resolution 2021-05-248, rescinding Resolution 2019-12-534, authorizing a real property exemption under revised code section 5709.40 and 5709.41 in connection with the development of certain property in the City of Seven Hills Compensation Agreement and related matters.
Second. Motion second for 2021-05248. Questions or comments?
I still have the.
Yeah. And refer to the Finance Committee to obtain additional information. Mr. Nusio, District Treasurer, will report back to the Board of Education at our first 2022 regular meeting date and time to be determined in our 2022 organizational meeting.
Second. Now we have, on two different pages, I'm sorry. Now we have a motion to second for 2021-05248. Questions or comments?
So just to be clear, referring back to the Finance Committee, it will report back in January of '22.
Okay. And until then, it just stays as is?
Right.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Ms. Nusio. Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-05248 has been approved. And that moves us to curriculum. Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you. I move to adopt Resolution 2021-06-226, approval to enter into the contract between the Career and Technical Education Job Training Experiential Learning Program with the Parma City School District and Baldwin Wallace University.
Second. A motion second for 2021-06266. Any questions or comments? Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-06266 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-06-267, approval of First Step preschool curriculum adoption for 2021-2022 school year.
Second. And motion second for 2021-06267. Questions or comments? Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-06267 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-06-268, approval overnight out-of-state field trips.
Second. Motion second for 2021-06268. Questions or comments?
This is to New York.
New York.
New York City trip.
I remember it's in the agenda.
Business, good.
Career tech.
Career tech.
Marketing business.
Right.
Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-06268 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-06-269, granting authority to the administration to enter into contracts for service-based agencies for the 2021-2022 school year.
Second. A motion second for 2021-06269. Questions or comments?
Can I just make a comment? I, he's not here, but I'd really be remiss if I didn't mention the work that Mr. Hoon has done, Mrs. Arcia, and Mr. Kaski. These are all obviously outside district placements. When Mr. Hoon started, we had 90 students placed outside the district to a $4.5 million tuition that we were paying. At this point, entering next year, we're actually at approximately 50 students with a total tuition of $2.8 million. So that's, that's general fund money, clearly, that we're saving and keeping in the district. More importantly than that, that's students that we're serving right here. And I think that's, that's really, I mean, certainly there's a financial piece, but there's a moral piece, too. And the moral piece is that our kids don't have to go to some extravagant outside-of-district placement where they have absolutely no connection to our teachers or their peers. They're here. And I just wanted to make sure that, you know, it's certainly a routine item. We do this every year. But we're having less and less of a need to really fall back on this. And that's, student Mr. Hoon's really tired of this work.
Thanks, Mr. Nusio.
Yes. Any other comments?
Just thanks for sharing that. I think that's important or is also to be reminded of.
Thanks for asking earlier. That made me think to share it.
Oh. Gotcha. Teamwork here.
There you go.
All's in your cart. Any other questions, comments? Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-06269 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-06-270, granting authority to the administration to enter into contracts of tuition-based facilities during the 2021-2022 school year.
Second. A motion second for 2021-06270. Questions or comments?
It was more of the, more of the same, right?
Correct. Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-06270 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything else to discuss, this concludes curriculum.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vaughn. Business, Mr. Kreis.
There are no action items tonight for business. Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes business for the evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kreis. Finance, Mr. Kreis.
Yes, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 2021-06-271, approval to enter into an agreement with the Industrial Appraisal Company to conduct an onsite inspection and appraisal of the Parma City School District buildings, site improvements fixed, and movable equipment.
Second. A motion second for 2021-06271. Any questions or comments?
Can you give us a couple words on what the, what this versus everything we just went through, OCC study, like, kind of where, what this is and why we're doing it right now?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
Why?
Why are we doing?
What's this, what's this mean?
So what, what's this, why is this happening now versus, like, the studies that UOCC did? What's different about this, that kind of thing?
So the OCC project is to construct new buildings.
Right.
That's pretty much what this is. This is for us to know what we own. They recommend every, like, three to five years that your capital assets do inspection, make it from an outside company. They tag all the items. They tell you what you have for our accounting, our audit reports. They'll say, we own all this information, all these different things. It hasn't been done in years. I can't, the business office doesn't even remember the last thing that's been done. So.
So it's well overdue.
Yeah, it's well overdue. For accountability purposes. It has really nothing to do with the OCC at all, their property. This is, yeah. And also, items we own, we're attracted for insurance purposes, too. So you could tell our insurance company, these are all the items we own. So say a tornado in Parma City here, we have a list of everything we own. The list we have now is probably incomplete.
They've got a complete inventory of everything?
Mm-hmm.
Wow. That'd be quite a list.
Yeah, it will be.
And then who's responsible for maintaining this over the, like, next few years until we have another ODEs done?
I mean, the responsibility falls on my office, pretty much. If we deal with the accounting records, I'd say it falls on my office.
I would agree with him.
I bet you would. Any other questions? Thank you. Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-06271 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-06-272, approval of Medical Mutual of Ohio Employee Health Insurance Program.
Second. And motion second for 2021-06272. Questions, comments? Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-06272 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-06-273, approval of Medical Mutual of Ohio Stop-Loss Insurance Protection.
Second. And motion second for 2021-06273. Questions or comments? Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes. 2021-06273 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-06-274, approval of Employee Dental Insurance Program.
Second.
And motion second for 2021-06274. Questions or comments? Mrs. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes. 2021-06274 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-06-275, acceptance of new life insurance rate with MetLife.
Second.
Motion second for 2021-06275. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes. 2021-06275 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-06-276, approval of the May 2021 financial report.
Second.
A motion second for 2021-06276. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes. 2021-06276 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-06-277, ratification of investments.
Second.
And motion second for 2021-06277. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes. 2021-06277 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-06-278, approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second.
And motion second for 2021-06278. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes. 2021-06278 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-06-279, authorization to accept activity purpose statement.
Second.
And motion second for 2021-06279. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes. 2021-06279 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-06-280, acceptance of contributions and donations.
Second.
Motion second for 2021-06280. Questions or comments?
All right. As usual, we would like to thank these fine people for thinking of the Parma City School District and giving so generously to these, to Galloway Forge High School and then to Green Valley. That's very, very nice, very generous of them. But, you know, we have chess club. Nice.
Love chess.
Very good.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes. 2021-06280 has been approved.
And unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes finance for this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kreis.
Thank you.
Legislation this evening, Mrs. Carpus or Mrs. Brodts? Anything going?
Um, I don't really have much other than yesterday, several administrators from across our district, representatives, went down in support of the Fair Funding Act for our schools. And they had a wall of signs which were basically levy signs from all over the state of Ohio, and our sign made it down to the wall, which was interesting because none of us were down there, but it just shows how wide the support for this is that, you know, other people were down there advocating for it. Several of our state board members were down there, state reps. So we're just going to keep on, keep on watching that one.
We're also thrilled that one of those signs actually had a positive experience.
I'm done. I'm done. But yes, so we'll just keep watching that and then hopefully see what happens with it.
Thank you. Mrs. Brodts, anything?
No.
All right, thank you. That moves, thank you, Mrs. Carpus. That moves us on to Human Resources with Mrs. Brodts.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-06281, approval of the following certificated exhibits, confirmation of certificated appointments, confirmation of certificated replacements, confirmation of stipend amounts, acceptance of certificated resignations, and confirmation of supplemental appointments.
Second.
And motion second for 2021-06281. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes. 2021-06281 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-06282, acceptance of certificated retirement.
Second.
I have a motion and second for 2021-06282. Questions, comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes. 2021-06282 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-06283, creation of family and consumer science teacher high school level position and adoption of job description.
Second.
And motion second for 2021-06283. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes. 2021-06283 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-06284, approval of the following classified exhibits, confirmation of classified appointments and replacements, confirmation of change of classified assignments, confirmation of classified resignations, and approval of classified non-compensated leaves of absence.
Second.
Motion second for 2021-06284. Questions or comments?
Comment, I just wanted to recognize Rose Rose in this, part of this resolution. She is, again, retiring. I just really, really enjoy working with Rose. I think she's just a complete class act. She actually just gave me some topics. She actually furloughed herself this year, which I just think is always a very selfless act. She's been very engaged in accepting of and providing advice through the, you know, ending of the daycare, which obviously, you know, towards her programming in general, but she understood that it was a positive move for First Step and, you know, the education for the students enrolled in our First Step program. And we'll miss Rose, knowing Rose, you know, she's working very hard to make sure there's a very clear succession plan in place and we'll look through that shortly, but Rose has been real asset to us and we're grateful for everything she's contributed.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes. 2021-06284 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-06285, acceptance of classified retirements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for 2021-06285. Questions, comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes. 2021-06285 has been approved. And I look forward to, you know, once again resuming, being able to honor our retirees for all their years of service in person. And, you know, we're on the brink of being able to do that, so that's another thumbs up.
Do we have something in the works with that?
Yeah, actually, next board meeting.
Next board meeting.
Okay. I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-06286, approval of reduction in force classified personnel.
Second.
And motion second for 2021-06286. Questions or comments?
I just want to say thank you to all of these folks. This was, I know, a difficult decision to vote on when we did, but it was a positive move for our district, and they have been very professional and very wonderful hearing out their duties. I actually saw some really great selfies and fun pictures of them, you know, wrapping up their classrooms for the last time. So thank them and wish them all the best of luck wherever the future may lead them.
I remember when we talked about this several months back, that we were going to also help provide parents if they needed help in locating, you know, their, their next placement, and hopefully we can still, you know, honor that commitment that, you know, somebody is looking for a place that is highly recommended and stuff that Parma City School has been offered at reference.
We have been engaged in those conversations and we'll continue.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes. 2021-06286 has been approved.
And I also thank those folks. I just think that program was so highly regarded and clearly advantageous to those little squads. So it was, you know, a shame that we just didn't have room for everything and couldn't support everything, but thanks to all of those folks for their, their work. And moving on, I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-06287, eliminate supervisory position and suspend contract.
Second.
Motion second for 2021-06287. Questions or comments?
Can you give us a couple words about this one in the next winter?
Yeah, we can. You know, since Mr. Gorman's come here, I think our food services or nutrition services department has really just improved by leaps and bounds. Certainly, we've talked a lot about the community feeding program that has been in place since COVID began, but beyond that, the quality of what we serve and diversity of what we serve in our, in our schools has dramatically improved, and that's under Bob's leadership. Bob had some conversations with us several, several weeks back about continuing to put his foot on the pedal of, you know, how can we continue to do more? How can we continue to be better? How can we really embrace this farm-to-school phenomenon that he started, but can use some assistance in? And so we took some time to look at some different qualifications that, you know, could lead us to really taking that next step in the food services department and, you know, sort of juxtaposed it with what we currently had in terms of this food service program system and really thought we could upgrade what we're getting out of that position. And anytime you have that opportunity, it, who is your organization to take it? The hard part is, and we all have to acknowledge, there's, there's a human toll for that. And the toll is that, you know, these resolutions take a 13-year employee with our district, you know, and essentially say, she can apply for this job, she can apply for other jobs, but they can, you know, guarantee that she'll continue to be employed with us. And that's not her fault. That's not because she's done a poor job. That's because we feel the need to move in a different direction and really look for some expertise and actually a degree in terms of what we're looking in terms of horticulture and farm-to-school steps that this person can lead. Mr. Gorman has actually taken on as well, he will be our district's wellness coordinator next year. And we're excited about that because of what we can really marry between his departments and some of the work that we've already started to live with Mike Price. So we want to support Mr. Gorman. We think that he's been a visionary. We want that vision to continue to grow, and we want to give him the team that he needs to do that. At the same time, we'd be remiss to not thank Mary Kerchi and realize that that's a, that's a very difficult decision, but ultimately it's about moving our services for our children further.
Can I give you? Any other questions? Yeah, this was 288, right?
287.
Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes. 2021-06287 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-06288, creation of farm-to-school nutrition coordinator position and adoption of job description.
Second.
A motion second for 2021-06288. Questions or comments?
I guess the only thing I would point out is, you know, again, we're specifically going to be able to hire a degree person in horticulture, dietetics, culinary, or food service management. And really, you know, while that's relatively broad, we're really looking for that horticulturalist that can help us to advance our food-to-school, farm-to-school initiatives.
Questions, comments, others? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes. 2021-06288 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-06289, confirmation of nutrition services summer pay rates.
Sorry.
A motion second for 2021-06289.
Sorry, I was reading.
Any questions or comments?
I'm sorry, did you second it?
I, I, I didn't do my acting.
Teamwork.
Sorry.
And Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes. 2021-06289 has been approved.
I'll just say congratulations to all the retirees and best wishes to anybody moving on to other endeavors. And unless another board member has anything that they'd like to discuss regarding human resources this evening, that will conclude human resources. Thank you very much.
Pretty very much, Mrs. Brodts. Policies, Mrs. Carpus?
Yes. I move to adopt resolution 2021-06-290, approval of revised policy 1662 anti-harassment.
Second. Motion second for 2021-06290. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes. 2021-06290 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-06291, approval of revised policy 3362 anti-harassment.
Second.
Motion second for 2021-06291. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes. 2021-06291 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-06-292, approval of revised policy 4362 anti-harassment.
Second.
Motion second for 2021-06292. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes. 2021-06292 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-06-293, approval of revised policy 7450 property inventory.
Second.
I have a motion second for 2021-06293. Questions or comments?
Sean, is this, so what we approved earlier, does that align with this policy done? The appraisal inventory of all of our assets and stuff like that?
Yes, it does.
Okay. It's got the annual piece in it about. That's why, that's why I was trying to figure out how, like, making sure we're all of our stars. That was it. The question.
As well.
Oh, gotcha.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes. 2021-06293 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-06-294, approval of revised policy 7455, accounting system for capital assets.
Second.
Motion second for 2021-06294. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes. 2021-06294 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-06-295, approval of revised policy 8500 nutrition services.
Second.
Motion second for 2021-06295. Questions or comments for the board? Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes. 2021-06295 has been approved.
Unless any other board members have anything to discuss, this concludes policy for this evening.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Carpus. Is there any further information this evening requested by any board members? Seeing done, are there any questions or concerns to be written to the record this evening?
There's not.
Or is not? And I move to adopt resolution 2021-06297 to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
And motion second for 2021-06297. Are there questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes?
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
2021-06297 has been approved. This meeting is adjourned.